Okay, now we're jumping back to item J. Department head reports. Public Works sanitation. Mr. V. Hill, I believe that might be you, is it?
I believe that. Public Works would like to present the commission sometimes at our one way. Public Works employees, they represent the city. Thank you. Using my headset, I'm the employee down in the field.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Does this make up for the shirt?
Mayor Protown, Mayor and Commissioner, our Public Works Department is, has really two department heads that is split up into streets, buildings, parks, and sanitation solid waste. So we have Mr. Phillips and Mr. V. Hill. And as in addition, we have a number of employees of the Public Works Department present, and I'll turn it over to you guys once you introduce your crew.
Pat V. Hill, Public Works manager, been here twenty-three and a half years. I'm the photographer, so I'm after Marty's job. We've got a little presentation for everybody here. He's got the loud voice, so.
We would like to recognize that we do have some staff members here this evening. We've got Ernie Castillo, our landfill manager, manager of management. Thanks to him. Oh. Until that meeting, totally, it's going, yes, Phil. Thank you. We have Joseph Lieber, landfill caretaker. Until it's closed, he's on the hook for that also. And we also have Larry Marcus, who happens to be utility three, and also the president of our local union. We have a semi locked up computer after those presentations.
Can I ask who's the young man with the city right there in the front row?
This is my son, Joshua.
How about boy Joshua?
Doctor, doctor. There you go.
Hopefully Phillips didn't have a fire alarm thing, because I borrowed this from my wife. So as Mr. Berry kind of explained, we have a combined department head presentation. I do a lot more of the talking, because Pat does a lot more of the actual work in the field. So the way this has kind of worked since I came on is I've taken over solid waste while still trying to handle a lot of the grant administration duties. Pat has graciously helped me and allowed me to not fall on my face in a number of aspects, and he's in the field more often than I am while I do the other things. So we do this thing together. I'm the chattier of the two, but Pat will chime in, and he's also here to answer any So to start with, the departments underneath, our guys are Public Works, Parks, Building Maintenance, and Solid Waste slash Sanitation. Public Works staff, department head Pat V. Hill. David Gaiagos is our fill foreman. David's not here this evening, but very integral to what we do at the city. Robert Santos is our mechanic. Larry Marcus, who's here tonight, is utility three, one of our go-to guys. Donald Garcia, utility two. Larry Berg, as well as Isaiah Santa Stevens, and Richard Brel, our laborers. This crew is the down and dirty bunch. That's when things go wrong, we ask a lot of these folks. These are folks that are gonna clean your alley, patch every pothole, respond to pretty much any disaster that we have within the department, and they are also the crew that's responsible for baling and recycling all materials that come through. Next up, we've got the tasks that are associated with these gentlemen. Street patching and sweeping, snow removal, traffic control, storm drain maintenance, alley cleanups and surface maintenance, recycling, the ever-popular bear route in which each of us is humbled enough to shovel trash back into a dumpster, and the everything and anything category. And that's not really being facetious, it's just that this is the muscle for the city of Raton. If you've got desks at the library that need moved out, or a thousand pounds of books, or just any random task from pulling a storm grate to get a cat out of it, this Public Works crew is kind of the be-all, do-all of that. Next up, we've got the parks staff. They're led by Eddie Romero, who's the parks foreman. The most senior guy behind him is Randy Trahill, utility one parks operator. You can see Randy most days riding a yellow lawnmower around one of our various green spaces. And they also have Jordan Cruz, who's a laborer within their department. What parks does? Mowing and watering of all green spaces, the maintenance of five individual ball fields. They also assist in snow removal. They take care of the downtown medians and landscaping, with some assistance from Public Works as needed. They're responsible for the irrigation system, repairs and installation on both the potable water systems within the ball fields, as well as the clean water system. Maintaining and cleaning of hundreds of acres of parks, and that's not a tongue-in-cheek, as you all know. Roundhouse Park in itself encompasses over a hundred acres. By the time you take in the Optimist Park and some of these others, they've got a lot of ground to cover there. They are the ones that pull up and empty the downtown waste receptacles that are spread out throughout town, and they are required to do the ground maintenance of all city buildings, knocking down the weeds outside City Hall and such. Next up, building staff. These fall under the guise of Public Works also. Rico Trahill, who most of you are familiar with, and Leonard. Rico's the supervisor, Leonard's the assistant. What these gentlemen do, they are the folks most responsible for convention center setup, tear-down, and all the events associated with that. You know, it suddenly strikes me that there's a gentleman named Doug that works part-time with them that I don't know very well, that I omitted from the presentation, and I apologize for that. I don't know if I've met Doug myself, but suddenly it rings on me that he's there. They are also responsible for the routine maintenance, fall city buildings, things like painting, plumbing, carpentry, et cetera. We ask them to do, you know, almost all of the minor tasks. If any of you've noticed, the two wooden doors as you enter City Hall have been freshly refinished from a poor state to a pretty nice-looking door. That was the work of Rico and Leonard. When we say they maintain city buildings, that list seems longer as you start to look at it. You know, the convention center, obviously, City Hall, we're in, the Schuler, the welcome center, the senior center, aquatic center, the community center, the library, and the Wells Fargo building all fall under their general charge of things that they'd be expected to maintain or help out with. They're generally the folks that would call in a contractor if we have plumbing or electrical issues that are outside of the realm of what they can accomplish in-house or do without having those specific abilities. Up next, the near and dear to my heart, pardon, fancy dress trash guy, that's me, Jason Phillips, still in a state of denial. Thomas Martinez is my right-hand man, and he is also our mechanic. Tommy's getting ready to rejoin us after some time off for some medical issues. Ernie Castillo, landfill slash convention center slash the guy that makes sure the trash disappears every day. Leroy Mays, sanitation driver, one utility four. Ernie and Leroy both longtime employees, as well as Tommy. Henry Watley, also sanitation driver. Joseph Lieber, who's here tonight, his title's landfill caretaker. We're gonna have to adjust some of these to the new reality as we change in. One of the most recent members of our department, a young man who works very hard for us, Camilo Torrengel, who's not here, but he's a laborer. So what do we do? We pick up and transport all commercial and residential waste within the city of Raton. We're required to maintain our now-closed landfill, which isn't as easy as it sounds after a monsoon rain. We do provide transfer station operations where the public, as well as our route drivers interface, for us to transfer trash to our designated locations. Bail tires. We turn all of the green waste that's brought into town into mulch that we use for the old full pile for landfill reclamation, or we give to the public. Maintenance and repair of all solid wasted equipment and vehicles. As part of a self-sustaining department. Tommy takes care of most of an aging fleet of trucks. Ernie's expected to keep his stuff running, and transfer station litter control is important to mention, because that's a large part of what the guys do out there when you're transferring trash outside. It takes a lot of dedication, and it's a pretty humbling task, because the next trash truck could blow it all right back up against the fence, and you start over from there. Just kind of a little proof that we aren't hiding in the alleys like some people would like to think. WPA structures, the backbone of all city drainage, would cost millions upon millions to restore, and they've gone south over a few years. There's been some neglect there, and some no real emphasis by the administration to keep those up, or to give us the materials that we need, because concrete isn't cheap, and nor is this work easy. You know, that's hand and knees, filling in between grouted rocks, trying to maintain the historical nature of these structures as well, and keeping them functional as working. And after it's all said and done, you know, you can have a product that'll last another seventy-five years and hopefully serve the citizens well. Molten WPA ditch, this is right at the bottom of Goat Hill, and a lot of what the work these gentlemen do is pretty humbling. There's shovels used often. We prefer equipment when it fits there. So there's the crew digging. We did have a little assist with heavy equipment, but due to the crumbling nature of the WPA walls, there was a lot of hand shoveling that went into this ditch. You can see from the dirt marks higher up on the wall how deep that silt was, and if you've ever seen the guys in the ditch, you appreciate it.
I didn't see you in the ditch.
We tried to keep me out of the ditch. That's, they don't like it. I offer all the time.
Good answer.
This is a culvert that feeds that same structure. If you take a look at it, you can see that is level full to the very top. It's a culvert that had probably not functioned effectively for a number of years, and when culverts plug, water goes somewhere where it's not supposed to go. This is that same culvert after the boys were done with it. You can see from that rust and corrosion line that it had been there for a while, and that section of pipe right there was all hand shoveled. We did get an assist from Raton Water Works, but, I mean, and Fire Department. Once we got the larger debris out, but this consisted of Public Works guys hunched over coal mine style nineteen-fifties trucking rocks out.
For about two weeks, on their knees.
We appreciate the effort, and we didn't have any workman comp claims, so we survived it. Concrete removal. You know, a lot of these projects around town, you see the end result of. This is Larry Berg, a Public Works laborer, jackhammering out the sections of concrete that would eventually become the trees that, you know, everybody likes along the street sidewalk. They don't just show up there overnight. You've got a lot of demo work to do to make that possible. Beautification. This is the crew less than two weeks ago, working in the downtown South Interpass area, pulling the ugly elm trees away from the beautiful junipers that inhibit the tongue-in-cheekly. They're what's there, so we try to keep the rest of the stuff out, but nothing's an easy task in this department. More beautification. This is the statue that was the subject of the flyover in the new story several weeks ago, and in preparation of the film crew, and just general good housekeeping, Public Works staff try to polish it, keep it looking good, pay tribute to veterans that we feel strongly about, and they're not easy tasks. For some reason or another, this particular statue, it had got kind of a film on it. I don't know if somebody had tried to clean it with a turtle wax or something to help us out, but we ended up spending a lot of time getting that help reversed. Lots to mow. That's Randy, mowing. You can see him there anytime the grass is growing. Street sweeping, something near and dear to the city manager's heart. We try to get it out at least once a week. It's an older machine. They're $200,000 to replace, so our mechanics just keep it running, and we do the best we can with what we've got. Storm drain repairs. This is a large culvert on Red River Road that had collapsed. Got some assistance there from Raton Water Works, as they have a little of the skillset in some of the materials that we didn't have for the repair job, but for the most part, Raton Water Works and Public Works have always helped each other out. They have a vector truck that's able to locate utility lines, which makes our lives a lot less dangerous when we're doing some of this work. Self-contained mechanic shop. We've got Robert and Tommy there. These two gentlemen are tasked with keeping an aging fleet, and we're talking pretty old, of equipment up and running, and, you know, anyone that's seen much heavy equipment run, if you use it, it's gonna break. There's gonna be hydraulic hoses, and these two gentlemen do a good job of keeping what we have on the streets. What happens when you don't maintain your storm drains?
Illegal dumping. That was caused by a couch plugging up a storm drain.
That's, that's the end result. None of these tasks are fun, but they're valuable. Other things near and dear to Mr. Berry's heart, as well as the people, is patching and street repairs, something we try to spend as much time as we can on. We realize that there's a lot of them out there. We apologize, and we try to patch as many as we can. Outdoor trash transfer. This is where the rubber meets the road, folks. This is the condition that Ernie and his crew endured throughout winters and the conditions that we're in. It's hard on men and machine both. You know, operating hydraulics in sub-zero temperatures is not easy, and it's one of the reasons why as some of these things clear off, that transfer station construction's just gotta take place. We know you're committed to it, and we'll do our due diligence to get there, but photos like this remind me of why it's important. Landfill maintenance. We talked about, you know, why it's closed doesn't mean that you don't just have to not do any work there. This erosion requires Ernie and the crew to generally either import soil to fill these reals and gullies as they develop. At a minimum, he's gotta walk the dozer across and rework those slopes after every major rain, and he does a heck of a job with it. Green waste mulching. That what it looked like before it becomes mulch? And green waste, we use loosely. If it's even closely resembling wood, it becomes mulch in the city of Raton. When it costs $68 a ton to get rid of stuff, you get a little creative on what you can recycle. Recycling. That is the cardboard operation. Every Thursday, we travel around to dozens of businesses, pick up cardboard and bail it. Used to be a lot more advantageous from a money standpoint than it is now. And recycling education. In an effort to spread propaganda to the next future batch of illegal dumpers and non-recyclers, we try to get to them early, and often. This is a group of students that came to our mess last year, and we're hoping that they learn to close trash can lids and recycle.
Clean up after bath.
I've offered them a quarter. We'll see how it goes. The numbers. Today, we've responded to over 140 citizen complaints, and we have over 60 pending. We've constructed over, completed over 30 priority tasks assigned by the city manager. That can be anything from some neglected storm drain that, you know, a commissioner's pointed out, or he's seen on his own, just things that need to be done that someone with an engineering background notices. We've patched hundreds of pounds of, hundreds of potholes, and we've got 200 tons of coal mix. We're not through it all yet, but it's, we can use all that and then some. We've baited dozens of illegal dump sites. When you've driven by that couch, that mattress, that pile of mattresses, nowhere in the world is that right. That is illegal dumping. We annually transfer almost 6,000 tons of trash. Thank you, Ernie, for that. That's about 20 tons a day leaving, and the humbling part about that is, you know, more or less, we got 6,000 men, women, and children living within the place that use it, and we're generating almost 2,000 pounds of trash a piece. We've restored multiple storm drain structures. We recycled over 22,000 pounds of material. That was our 2014 total, as reported to NMED. We recycled a lot of tires and shipped them out, and the kind of neat thing is, you know, they, they went on to a second life where they go on to produce cement at a kiln located in Florence, Colorado, so no more tires. There were a lot of them out there. Ernie had been storing tires for probably, what, the better part of a decade without a real project to eliminate them.
They've been a fifteen years. At least fifteen years.
Through a successful completion of a grant, we got rid of the bulk of them, and tires are a problem for everyone, and we were fortunate to get rid of those things. And we've placed over 300 cubic yards of crushed material in the alleys. If you remember, we had the concrete cushion contract. We've got a mountain of that material, and slowly but surely, as we're able to, we try to blade the alleys and get some of this material in there and improve the situation for our trash trucks and our residents. The good, the bad, and the ugly. I like old western movies. The good. We've got good people. They've got experience, they've got ability, we've got a good mix of young and old, and they work well together. For the most part, they all give me a hard time, but the rest of the world, they seem to take pretty good care of. The bad. We've got a small staff. You know, at one time, the combination department head presentation of this would have probably encompassed 35 people, but we realize the reality. Tight budgets just make us have to do things more efficiently. The aging equipment costs us in operation and maintenance, but we're aware of our budget, and we know that there's no silver lining out there. IT loaders and such are very expensive, and in our current condition, we just gotta do the best we can to keep what we've got on the road. Bad habits. That's not our habits I'm talking about. We may, I have some bad habits, but this is the citizens that, you know, we've, we've basically entrusted seven individuals to clean up this town after 6,000 people, and if even 10% of those aren't doing the right thing, we're behind. So now the ugly. That's the ugly. And whenever a constituent asks you, why are we not patching potholes? Why is this not being done? The number-one answer is that we are responding to things like this that we shouldn't be, and every time we go there, that takes away from something of higher value. I mean, it's depressing, it's frustrating, and it can make you angry, and we hate it. It makes our city look horrible, but it's a double-edged sword. If we respond to it, the next morning, people get the idea that it's okay to do, so let's throw it back out there. If we don't respond, and we do the things that are the higher priority, like patching streets and maintaining storm drains, we feel bad about leaving it in our own neighborhoods. Our, our people that are on this crew work here, live here, raise our kids here, and, you know, none of us want to see that. This is another part of the ugly that we're attempting to address, and I appreciate your support going forward in that, because this is chasing your tail, throwing the same trash back in a dumpster every day. And, you know, we've, we've committed one to two gentlemen towards this end all summer long, and it's just wasted money, in my opinion. They're ugly. Used to like them. Don't anymore. They're really ugly. More things when bad actions take place. You know, in the winter, we get on the radio and we ask people, please do not dispose of your ashes immediately after having a fire. This is the dump, a load of about six tons of solid waste that, you know, had to be ejected to keep from burning down a trash truck and possibly killing the guy that's driving it. And when we asked the public for these things, just like the illegal dumping, what you won't see in a couple of these photos, is that right next to that trash can, nine times out of 10 is a gas meter that we don't see until we get there, and when you cover stuff like that up, you truly do jeopardize the lives of these people. Ironically, in doing, you know, some research for this presentation, and not to take any thunder away from folks like police and fire, Rankin.com does a list of the most dangerous jobs in America. You know, number one is fishermen, number two is logger, three airline pilot, things that you'd expect. Number six is sanitation and recycling workers, ranked higher than police and fire. And not saying that, you know, it's the heroic duty that those folks do, but it's dangerous. We put a lot of tines in the street, and, you know, when you're, when you're putting miles through alleys and stuff, you're kind of humbling to learn that these guys actually die at a rate much higher than the rest of the folks. Challenges ahead. Aging infrastructure and equipment. That includes dumpsters with bad lids and rotten bottoms that even if there wasn't a bear in this town, would require significant capital investment. Public education for recycling. You know, this is where I lose popularity a little at times, but I think it's important to speak the truth, and, you know, recycling is a good thing, but recycling in the wrong way sets us back. If, if people don't sort and use these facilities correctly, we spend a lot of manpower by undoing things that are wrong, and it's important as we go forward that, you know, if we're gonna have recycling, number one, those consumables don't have any value. In my short time at the city of Raton, three through seven is obsolete. Can't find a buyer for it. Cardboard prices have plunged 30%. So as we commit our resources, I believe it's the right thing for planet Earth, and, you know, I fully support our volunteers that do it, but we've gotta be more efficient, and we can't be blind to the fact that on Mondays and Fridays, Public Works staff empty those trailers. The material in those trailers isn't exceed the value of the folks that we're paying to empty them. Every Thursday, when we do a cardboard route, it takes five people, and the value of that cardboard isn't exceeding what we're paying these gentlemen. Our hope going forward is that as we replace some of these bear-proof dumpsters, we get some quality containers that we convert the cardboard route to a more automated process. But when I bring up these things, it's never that I'm against recycling, it's just that I've gotta manage this department in a public way, that tax dollars don't go to waste, and that we deploy our forces the best way we can. Reducing illegal dumping. That's a big one for us. That's changing 40 years of past habits, and it's gonna be a lot of time on the radio, a lot of begging, and hopefully some of them kids from the recycle center growing up. Equipment repair and replacement. You know, as the fleet ages, just like you've, you've heard from Chief Garcia, it gets, it gets tougher, you know, when, when you're faced with, for example, we have a $50,000 budget for equipment repair in our entire department. We had one trash truck go down $7,000 on one piece of equipment that's just one of 30 that we're running. So you've gotta manage it, the budget's tight. Employee recruitment and retention. You know, I think it's important that we keep the folks that we have here. They're from here, they ride for the brand, and I haven't had real great luck acquiring new employees, so I don't know if that's reflected on me or the employees that we've hired, but it's definitely a challenge. We've got a couple temp slots open. We've rolled the double, the dice a couple times and lost.
Lost.
Goals and priorities moving forward. Improve safety department-wide. That's something that the city manager has mandated of all of our departments. We've got a safety coordinator, and it's something that's high on my list of things I need to do, and I haven't been doing a very good job at, honestly. You know, we're, we're looking to start from the ground up with standard operating procedures and, and job hazard analysis, things that other departments have had for years that we haven't, and you don't get there overnight, but I need to stay overnight one night so we can get there. Street repairs and more street repairs. Mr. Berry is one mandate, and that's streets, and none of us disagree with that. We all hate hitting a pothole. We hate hitting the same pothole two days in a row even more, and we hear you out there. We, we know the criticism, we get the complaints. Of those 140 complaints, the bulk of them are potholes. And how we handle that, just so people know, if it's a man-killer, we try to get there right away, and if you call and you say, this thing's bad, there's a difference between just the little dip that you go through and one that can pop a wheel or tire. You know, property and, and life, we respond to first. Storm drain maintenance. As you've seen, we've done a bunch of them. There are a lot of them out there. This town is built with, with a lot of floodwater that comes, and unfortunately, part of those beautiful pictures of those ditches without sediment in them, is the realization that come July, they're gonna be full of sediment again, and you're gonna do it all over. Landfill reclamation, this is a big one. We've, we've accepted bids on topsoil. We've got about 60,000 yards of material to move. We talked with our engineer today, and we've asked them to hurry along the construction plant so we can get this thing in a vegetative state. Bear-proof dumpster project, we've been over that, you know, high on the list. Transfer station construction. I know Ernie would like a building. I'd like Ernie to have a building. I think we've got the money to. Whenever, you know, we were unsuccessful in capital outlay, and we were... Whenever, you know, we were unsuccessful in capital outlay and we were hoping to build, you know, something a little. Nicer for the next thirty years, we, Mr. Berry and I have looked at it, we're gonna have to scale it down and. Build it with the funds we've got without any help, but it can still be a functional first phase, may not be able to house recycling. Equipment repairs and upgrades, some of that's, you know, by luxury of the landfill closing, we have some equipment that we can surplus, one piece in particular. Uh, we'd like to ask kinda going forward that we get it dressed up, surplus it out, take the proceeds and rebuild our two loaders. And improve the efficiency to keep recycling sustainable, we'll throw all of our thought and effort at how to uh. Make that work for everyone while not hindering us in other areas. Clean up and beautification, that's just part of what we do and keeping our buildings operational and appealing to the public. Closing, I just wanted to point out a tradition and I'm glad some of the guys showed up tonight because uh, this thing is is, I've been exempted from it, but I think it's cool. Public Works employees, if you notice in most photos, are always turned the other way. Because in public works, if your name's mentioned or if you're in the newspaper, you buy donuts. So they've all been mentioned, but it it kinda speaks to to the humble nature of of what this crew is, they're they're not looking for. For any, any glory, that's not what they do, but I think it's a cool tradition that they have. Uh, thank you as, you know, thank you for listening to the ramble in here and and I just wanted to thank our guys, you know, it's. A lot of the jobs these gentlemen do is is humbling work, you know, you realize that as you're shoveling someone else's. Dirty diapers back into a dumpster on a bear route and you know, I I try to thank them every every chance I get, but I think for. The size of the crew that we have, I think they do a heck of a job, I'm proud to be affiliated with them, I know Pat feels the same way. You know, on the street, people can say what they want about these guys, but I'd ride with them anywhere. Any questions if you have any from me or Mr. Viall, we'd be happy to have them or if I missed anything and anybody wants to.
I echo your sentiments exactly, watch these guys work, so.
Bunch of hardworking guys.
They are, and you guys do a good job with the crews that you have.
This past year, um, I've gotten to travel to both Chicago and St. Louis and um, I think you guys. Hold a candle to those cities of working hard and keeping our streets looking, looking as good as possible.
Big thank you to all, I appreciate it.
What's confusing to the public is we have a parks department that takes care of the cutting of the grass and that, and we have a parks and rec department. And it's very confusing, who does what?
But I'm sure they're doing a bang up job over there. Not as good as our guys, but you know, second place isn't bad either.
Well, we might consider a name change.
I I think you should change their name, whatever, whatever, whatever you want them to go.
And then another question I'm asked often is, uh, the parks people in the summer have to work like beavers. What do you have them do in the the winter?
Well, I can only speak to my time here, but uh, last winter, Mr. Berry tasked Parks gentleman with repainting all of city hall on the police department side. Nobody hides anymore.
So they they they're doing building repairs and that sort of thing.
I, you know, I, that's what they did last year, this year, you know, we've, we've actually talked to Scott about more help on the public work side, I mean, we. We can never have enough bodies and it's amazing what even a single individual, you know, you can't really send one guy to patch potholes, but you can send two while two are doing something else and. You know, we've kind of asked that this winter, they be kept kind of in-house more to to help the street department, that's what our hope is.
Thank you.
Thank you, any other questions or comments for Mr. Phillips or Mr. Viall?